Okay.
And Mr. Chair, we're ready to go when you are.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's time to open our Wednesday, February the 7th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Mr. Difro, will you please take role?
Philip Combs.
Present.
Lynn Larson. Mark Hare.
Present.
Sharon Wallace. Ellen Talbot.
Present.
Philip Lindholm.
Present.
Robert Estrada.
Present.
You have quorum.
Thank you. Time for approval of our minutes from January 17, 2024. It should all have received via email. I'm open for a motion, please. It's been, excuse me, motion by Mr. Combs and second by Ms. Wallace. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Do we have any updates to our agenda?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Public comment. We have listed one individual, Mr. Paul Krakow. Please, sir.
My name is Paul Krakow. I'm here on behalf of the Tacoma Country Club. I'm a member of the club. I live in the club. And we are working on putting a gate in at the entrance of the club. And there is not a mechanism in the city code that allows this gate. The way the language works, any four private homes or greater will require a plat amendment. As I say, there's no code that allows it. I've been working with Dave Buwer, and he wanted me to come here and talk to you folks and let you know what we're trying to do. There's a hole in the code. They recognize it. Would like this planning commission to understand that we're going to be coming forward with an application. We're actually working with the, with planning and legal to talk about creating a code amendment that'll allow private property owners to actually come forward and get gates in a time when security is an issue. Our legislators down in Olympia are doing us no favors. And so we're taking it upon ourselves. And I'm sure you've heard from others that have wanted to put gates in, and you've told them they can't. Four homes or greater. In the club, we have substantially more than four homes. We're about, and I'm on the Security Committee, we're looking at increasing our fencing, putting more lighting in, monitoring of the properties. And the front gate is something we find it's part of that equation. We're going to layer various elements of our security. And I personally went through a plat alteration application here with the city two and a half years ago. And I could tell you, it was cumbersome, it was expensive, not only for us, the applicant, it was very expensive for staff. It requires a hearing examiner. The last thing the hearing examiner needs to be doing is approving a damn gate. He has other things better to do than that. So Buwer suggested I come here, talk to you folks, let you know what we're trying to do. I'm sure that you guys will be speaking to staff on this, and look forward to working with this group and with the staff, and I'm sure city attorney's office, and drafting the appropriate language and getting it in front of council for approval. So that's what we're trying to do. And I know that behind us, I've talked to a number of other property owners that they obviously can't go through a plat amendment, or a plat alteration, because of the cost, the timing, et cetera. And so this would open the door to others that would like to put in gates. So we'll be looking for others to, that can come alongside us, not so much for the money, but more, you know, the more that are involved. I know there's quite a few people in this community that'd like to gate. And so I think it's something that we'd like to review and work with you folks on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Krakow. Thanks for your comments and for your heads up. Do we have any other comments via Zoom?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So we'll close in our public comment, and we'll open up public hearings, but we have no public hearings this evening.
Correct.
All right. So we'll open and close that. And we have no unfinished business, but we do have new business. We have Ms. Newton, Becky Newton, if you would please.
And, Mr. Chair, I'll just do a brief introduction. So this evening, we're going to be talking about the city's multi-family tax exemption, or MFTE program. Becky Newton, our Economic Development Manager, is in charge of that program. And so what she's going to provide, first of all, is just a general introduction of what the program is. Some of you are well aware, some of you may not be. So just to even out the playing field for everyone. And then she's also going to be walking through a proposed change that the city council wanted the commission's recommendation on during the first quarter of this year. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Newton.
Thank you, Ms. Spear. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Thank you for having me this evening. As Ms. Spear mentioned, we're going to review briefly the multi-family tax exemption program, because I know that a number of you are new to the commission, and maybe not so familiar with that program. So the multi-family tax exemption program is a significant economic development tool that city council adopted an ordinance for, beginning in 2002. If you're interested in looking at detail, more detail on what the code actually says, that can be found in the Lakewood Municipal Code Title III under Revenue and Finance, and under Property Tax Exemptions for the multi-family tax exemption. So in addition to this being an economic development tool, it's also providing incentives to include affordability within the projects. It provides exemption from property tax from, for new or rehabilitated housing within the city of Lakewood. It does not provide exemption on land or ADUs, as an example. So we offer both an eight-year program if the projects are fully market rate, and then 12 years if the project includes at least 20% affordability. It was first codified by the state in 1995, and then there were some updates made to the state law in 2021. Next slide, please. So the program intent, so basically, the intent of the program is to encourage additional housing of all types, including permanently affordable housing and market rate housing within areas that the city designates by the city council as residential target areas. And those are in order to achieve our development densities, which are more conducive to transit use, also to promote economic investment and recovery, and to create family wage jobs, and finally, to stimulate new construction or rehabilitation of existing vacant and underutilized buildings for multifamily housing. Next slide, please. And then, just a little brief overview of the updates that were made in 2021 to the state code. The reason why they moved forward with updates were to allow more cities and counties to offer the program and to develop a 12-year MFTE specifically, and also permitting for 12-year extensions in exchange for rent restricted housing. So in some areas, even though you have perhaps the eight-year market rate, if you then decide you want to add a 20% affordability component, you can apply for 12-year exemptions in some parts of the city. Supplying tenant relocation assistance, this includes rental assistance as well as the relocation expenses for the tenants. Also requiring an evaluation of the risk of fiscal and economic displacement as a result of the program. And the state program also allows for a 20-year exemption in exchange for permanently affordable rental or owner-occupied housing. Also requires more comprehensive reporting, both by the city and also an audit by the, at the state level. Next. So what does Lakewood's program look like? So Lakewood offers an eight-year program currently for the market rate. And if the project is, includes the 20%, they can do the 12-year property tax exemption on the new or rehabilitated property housing. Project owners may, as I mentioned, apply for a 12-year extension if units have a 20% affordability minimum. The other caveat to that for the extension is that whereas the city requires 80% of AMI or area median income, for the extensions, there's a 70% affordability requirement. And those are allowed both in the Springbrook area, as well as the Lakewood Station District. So minimum requirements for an MFTE project must be located in a residential target area, a minimum of 15 new or rehabilitated units of multifamily, permanent occupancy, so the entire building must have a minimum of 50% of the space designated for multifamily housing. And the proposed completion date, once the agreement is made, that we're going to allow the exemption, the project must be completed within three years of that application conditional certificate. And then for compliance, the project, of course, must comply with all city codes, building, housing, and zoning codes. Next. Okay, so then, what are the residential target areas? So following a public hearing, the city council may, in its sole discretion, designate one or more residential target areas, or RTAs, is what we refer to them as. And they must meet the following criteria determined by the city council, that the target area lacks sufficient available desirable and convenient residential housing to meet the needs of the public, and who would likely live in those residential target areas, and providing of additional housing opportunities in the target area that will assist in achieving the following purposes, which are to encourage residential opportunities within the target areas, and also stimulate construction of new multifamily housing, and rehabilitation of existing vacant or underutilized buildings for multifamily.
Ms. Newton, before you go any further, let me ask, do you all have any questions regarding anything that was said prior to, anything prior to, anything RTAs? You have a question? Yes, Ms. Talbot?
I just wanted to ask for a quick clarification. I heard, I thought I heard you say that the ordinance was originally passed in 2002 in Lakewood, or did you mean that it was codified in state law?
The state law was 1995, and City of Lakewood adopted the ordinance in 2002.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I have a question. Also, the extension that you mentioned, was the, the city, the, there's two. There's the residential target areas. There were actually three, but the third one was not included in the extension. Why was that?
That's correct. So it's a little complicated, but, so within the Central Business District, city council determined that we would not allow the extension. And that's because the city's also looking at a tax increment financing project. And so what that is, tax increment financing is you develop a certain area within the city whereby you would like to see increased development in order to, and in order for us to develop the infrastructure that's required within that area, tax increment financing is a tool in which to do that. And so what you do is you look at what the anticipated private sector development will be within the area, and in that case, the central business area, which is also regional center, which is where we see a lot, we anticipate a lot of the commercial and residential development to occur. And so it allows the city to bond against potential future increases in property taxes due to private sector development. So if you have the MFTE, and the developers are applying and getting MFTE, that takes away some of those property taxes that we would normally realize and be able to utilize within a TIF project. So hopefully that helps to clarify why we determined that the Central Business District would not be the best place to allow for the extension. Does that answer your question?
Yes, but at the same time, your proposal at the end to increase the residential area in the central kind of defeats that, doesn't it?
Well, the reason why, and we'll talk a little bit more about why the extension, but the area that we're proposing to extend is not within the increment area and TIF. So TIF doesn't cover all of the Central Business District. It's just a section within the downtown area, which does not include the the extension that we're proposing for the MFTE. Does that make sense?
I'm sorry.
No, no problem. Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
I have one of the same questions.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. And so currently, the map that is shown on the right is the actual adopted Central Business District residential target area. Next. And then this is just to show the other two areas that currently have an RTA within Springbrook. There's a small area. And then also within the Lakewood Station District. Next. And so a lot of people ask, so what does affordable mean? And so I had mentioned, we adopted the 80% limit. So if the project is 80% of AMI, which is for the county area, and it shows by family, it depends on the family size, and so it shows the income limits for those rent restricted units, and what they need to cap out at.
And if I could just jump in to make a little more clarification. So this first row is showing a family size of one, or a single individual in a household. That is an area median income at 80% of 60,200. Whereas if you have a family size of eight, so one or two adults and six or seven kids, you would be looking at 113,550 to be at the 80% income limit under this calculation.
Thanks, Tiffany. All right. Okay, so application process. So of course, file with the Community Economic Development Department. We need preliminary floor plan, site planned statement acknowledging the potential tax liability, and that they understand when the project ceases to be eligible. And also for rehabilitation project, including an affidavit stating was sent, that the folks with, the tenants were sent a 120-day calendar day notice for vacating the household, and that they're also provided a comparable type housing in which to move in. And as I mentioned earlier, the rent and relocation expenses.
Ms. Newton?
Yes.
So, as an example of this, of this project here, so in the station area, as I recall, there are homes there that are projected to be removed as such to accommodate multifamily. So what you're saying is that those homes, if there are renters, they're going to be given 120-day notice and going to be, who's going to provide the housing of comparable size, quality, and price? Is it the individual who was replacing them with the multifamily? Or is the city going to assist?
So it is the property owner that's requiring them to relocate, providing the 120-day notice. They're also required to assist them in acquiring equal value or type of housing for which to move into. So it would be the property owner, not the city. However, the city must monitor those activities.
So if the property owner is, in fact, the owner and not a tenant, will he or she be required to leave the area? Are we going to buy him out? Or how is that going to work? What if he doesn't want to sell out?
I'm not, well, sell.
Clarification. Go ahead, please.
This only applies for someone who wants to build, who already owns the property. So you can't apply for a property you don't own to build on. So it's like an overlay. So if someone wants to build it, they could buy up all those houses. But if they wanted to kick those tenants out, they would have to make these accommodations. So it's to make sure that there's no way that someone slips through the cracks, or there's a displacement that's unintended. This is, in my opinion, very generous to the tenants, way more so than a lot of cities in the area. So I think this is kind of above and beyond. I think it's, I might even say too far, but I kind of want to hear the rest of what Becky's got to say. But I think if nothing else, this says the city's trying to do, make the property owner developer do right by the tenants. And I think that's it.
Ms. Spear?
Thank you, Tiffany.
And just to respond to Mr. Combs' comment, this is something that actually reflects something the city has already done to help with anti-displacement, which is something we're supposed to now be doing in our long-range planning. So it kind of dovetails in with some of the other things we'll be talking about this year.
Any comments? No comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Go on, please.
All right. Okay, so next, next page. Okay, approval process. So application must be reviewed and either approved or denied by the Community and Economic Development Director within 90 days. That is one of the changes that was made recently from a council-approved project to administrative approval. The director, of course, must provide reasons if for denial. And if approved, a conditional certificate and an agreement are signed by the city and the applicant, so we know exactly what's going to be built and what the expectations are. And the city then provides required documentation along with a check and fee to Pierce County within 10 days of finalizing that. And then the exemption would follow in the next year. Next. And then here's just a list of the City of Lakewood projects that we've had from the beginning. A couple that are listed below are proposed projects. One is a large multifamily project within Lakewood Town Center. And the other one, we're calling Springbrook II, or a Springbrook Annex, which is proposed pretty close to where the Wellstone Apartments is. So for a total of just over 1,070 units to date. Next. Okay, so then on to the Central Business District discussion. So in 2023, the city council adopted ordinance 792, also with the planning commission's help. They did provide a resolution helping to direct the city council, and what they believed would be the correct changes based on state law changes. At that time, it was decided not to expand the existing or add to the RTAs. During the November 6 city council public hearing on MFTE, there was some public comment made that encouraged extension, particularly in the area, which I've shown on the map that will follow, which is along this, in, along Gravel Lake Drive to the southernmost point of the Central Business District. So with that, city staff carefully reviewed the CBD RTA map, and proposed expansion areas that would, number one, not affect the TIF, which I briefly mentioned to you earlier, and that would also accommodate some projects that we think may come forward along Gravel Lake Drive and benefit those property owners, and encourage them to do that redevelopment in those multifamily projects. So under consent agenda, the city council did pull that item, feeling that there was more discussion needed before they expanded the CBD. And they did, again, bring it back for reconsideration, kind of a quick reconsideration on the fourth, particularly to include the new map. However, that did not pass. Next. Okay, and then final slide here. City council requested that this be addressed in quarter one of 2024 by the Planning Commission. And so why are we doing this map only? So one per city council request. Also, there's a high potential to attract one or more projects within the designated expansion area. The CBD has the highest need for residential and commercial development per the subarea plan. And other areas, we felt would be best considered once the comprehensive plan and the telecom plan are updated. And so that's why we are bringing this particular RTA back towards, to you for consideration, and to ask questions, any other questions you might have. We currently have a public hearing on this scheduled for February 21. And with that, I'll take any additional questions you might have.
Mr. Chair? In the proposed expansion area for the Central Business District, I can't help but notice the old library site is in that zone.
Yeah.
Is that, that's city-owned property? Is that right?
No.
It is not. So would that be able to be developed under this expansion and whatnot?
It could be.
Into that type of housing, potentially?
It could be. Yeah, it's all up to the Pierce County Library System, obviously, and what they'd like to do with their property.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions? I've noticed that this proposed extension saw occupied. That is to say, so in the other areas where we have this, there's room for expansion, there's room to build, but in this case, saw occupied, which means that whoever came forward with this wants to eventually tear down what's there now, to rebuild. So why would the city allow that? I mean, that's the destruction of businesses. And this is churches, and like you say, with the library and other businesses that are there. And it's a small area. I don't understand why someone would come forward to tear down or to rebuild.
Understood. There is some property at the very end, around behind the Clover Park Shops, which was purchased by Mr. Dave Iverson or the Iverson family. And they've done a boundary line adjustment. There is a business that had moved out. And so that's one of the areas that's being proposed as a multifamily redevelopment. That's one example. And That's one example. And, you know, should the library decide to relocate to another area, then they could then sell their property for multifamily tax exemption project or multifamily property. So yes, most of it is redevelopment. Of course, the church, it's not going to redevelop. However, the, the one particular project that I'm aware of is the project that's owned by Mr. Iverson.
So because of that one input, we decided to, there's a seven eleven, there's a building right next to it, all those occupied. And down below, as you say, there's a bank, there's, oh my gosh, there's multifamily, I mean, adult family homes, et cetera. Because of one individual, we're looking at the whole thing, huh?
Tiffany.
Miss Spear.
I think Mr. Combs had his hand up as well.
Okay, Mr. Combs first.
Yes, sir.
I think what you're, what you're talking about is the reason why this is in place. If you remember in the beginning, the reason the State Department of Commerce has this out there is not just housing, it's for economic development. And so if you have a single bank or a seven eleven and all that parking, now it has opportunity to be much more. And so it services, you know, potentially fifty, a hundred or families and, and has commercial in it. And so there is a real benefit to it. It drives development, construction, taxes. And now you increase your tax base, you have more residents. It is like the quintessential win-win. So to me, it's not an issue of tearing down buildings. It's, we have a ton of opportunity that we need to tear down. I mean, we got so much asphalt here, a sea of asphalt in Lakewood that this isn't downtown Seattle or downtown Lakewood or downtown Tacoma. We, we have land everywhere. And so this to me is like the tool that helps get that going. This is, and I'm, I'm kind of, you know, I'm a little biased because I, I am a big advocate for more housing. And I think if we're going to try and address affordability issue, we have to have more of it. And so the more we can build, the better that is for everybody. This has been highly effective. If you read the Daily Journal of Commerce, PJC and Business Journal, almost all the construction projects throughout Pearson, King County use this. This is, this is where all the development is coming from, especially in this market. So when the market goes down, lower income projects get built. Unfortunately, we're not seeing enough market rate product. And here we have an overabundance of lower income. It doesn't mean that we don't need more, but the future projections show that we have a greater need for market rate project, which is what this does. This helps spur that. So I'm, I'm especially a fan here. In fact, my, my push would be to expand this to more areas. And I know Becky or Ms. Newton, you have a lot here already. I, I would propose that we continue to look at expanding and I would not be opposed to having an overlay inside the TIF district because the goal behind it is economic development and more housing. And if you pull back on those things, why not get a double up? Get someone to look at it because we're not getting enough people looking at it now. And you go back on that list, all the recent developments were low income or small projects. We don't see anything in there. Alliance, they're, they're known for low income. I, I, no offense, I mean, it's just, it's one of those things. We need, we need a developer to come in and say, we're going to offer something that will meet the needs of the people who are here and our future growth. And right now, we're only getting this small portion. So that, that was, that was one, one thought on that. I, I, I also, and I mentioned this last year, I, I'm kind of a, I would also consider maybe the smaller projects not be included. You know, make them meet some kind of hurdle. And I only say that from an administrative standpoint. You know, we're trying to get more development and more density. And so if you have twelve units replace five units, is that the density you're looking for? And so I think that from an administrative standpoint, because you have to administer this, you go through all the same work, if it's a fifteen unit building or a hundred and fifty unit building. So I would say up the ante just a little bit, not that I'm trying to discourage it, but more, let's make it, let's right-size the amount of work you have to do on it is, would be my take. And I think I've covered everything I had on my list.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I had.
Ms. Wallace?
I have some concerns. I guess I'm trying to understand what the city is trying to do. Our development rate is not that at Pierce County. We're running at about zero point nine percent compared to one point four percent for your, over annual. And so I look at the development here and I say, are we trying to build housing? This has been traditionally a bedroom community. Are we looking for industry? If you want jobs, then building a bunch more buildings doesn't do that. What we need are, if we have low income people, we need jobs that pay them a living wage so we can bring up their wages. So to me, not that we have the land, we're not going to build a Boeing here, but what kind of industry can we bring to Lakewood? That would be much more useful to me in development because that would provide living wage jobs, particularly for this group of people that are underused and marginalized. And that would bring up their incomes and then that would be an economic engine as opposed to building more houses or building a few more shops or developments, but industry, jobs where we make something. You know, if you could get a Subaru plant, now I'm not advocating that, we're certainly not going to build microchips like they do in Taiwan. But industry is what drives development, not houses. And so I would propose that we really need to look at, how can we bring in jobs? Industry, that's going to promote development and affordable housing and give good wage jobs to people who need it. So I guess that would be, I would hope, I, I'm in line with what the City Council wants, but to me that we need to make that decision. Are we going to promote jobs and economic development that's going to drive our city's growth? Are we going to promote, you know, a few little buildings here and there? I don't think of, you know, building a few more housing projects or multifamily. I know we've got to meet those development projects, but people need jobs and they need jobs that pay a living. We want people to be building parts for airplanes. That pays better than building cars. That kind of thing is what I think, especially when you look at our workforce that we have here. They are a lot of marginalized people and that would be good for them and that would raise our standard. And along that, if the property from the old library became available, Lakewood's education system is nearly the bottom in the country. We have some areas that are better, but we're typically in the bottom third in the way we are graduating. We have people who, we have a seventy-five percent literacy rate from our high schools. That's a problem. So I would propose instead that we have a development center for kids who say don't know how to read in first, second and third grade. Maybe we need more special programs to address those issues. We want to have people be able to read and write. And we're not doing a very good job. So I would like to encourage development, as he says, but I want jobs. I want manufacturing jobs, not service industry, which is what we have now. That's my comments.
Sir.
Spear, a question. By moving forward with this proposed expansion area, does that affect our numbers where we have to, you know, we're making these long-range projections on, we have to make room for X number of units? Is this adding to that number that we have to plan for? Is it, is it meeting that goal by making this expansion available? Or is it adding to what we've already planned for? Is this in addition to meeting that 2040 goal or?
It is not, Commissioner Herr. What we're doing here is allowing for a little more enticement, if you will, of a developer wanting to come into this part of the city to do up to fifty percent commercial residential split or, you know, higher percentage of residential. But those projects do not add to the number of units that the city has to plan for. That is a completed process that's done at the county level with all of the local jurisdictions.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that goal number is out there. What I'm saying is by making this expansion available, are we stepping up to that number because we're making room for more units in this corridor?
Yes, I, and I, yeah. And to respond to both Commissioner Wallace and Combs, a couple of things. First of all, this is the downtown and the way that this subarea is targeted at this point is to take about three quarters of the jobs for the city. And that is based on research that was done with Ms. Newton in charge, along with other consultants, taking a look at the type of market that's here, the type of jobs that are realistic to try to plan for here. And also looking at the potential given land uses, access to transportation and, and freight corridors. And so downtown is really a, an area targeted to concentrate housing units, up to a hundred units per acre. So it's, it's dense and it's tall. That's the intent. And then also additional jobs. And so the idea eventually is that this is an area where people truly can work and live. And we are hoping that I are walking around in order to do so rather than driving. And then by incorporating the expanded MFTE program here, it's exactly, as you say, Commissioner Herr, this is, again, trying to incentivize what the city is hoping for and is planning for, and now by, from the state being told it needs to do. So this is something that, right now, this is a short-term, single map that you're talking about, but as Ms. Newton said, this is going to come before you for other areas of the city, either later this year or into next. The other thing I would say for Chair Estrada regarding downtown and what are we doing with this program? No one is saying you have to. It's the giving the option, right, to the property owner. They are going to decide whether the time is right to sell or whether they want to keep doing what they're doing. But it is that idea of if you decide to explore other types of uses on your property, here's a way to incentivize that in an area where the city hopes it happens. So that's the point behind the MFTE maps. I don't know if you have anything else.
So I, I have quite a few thoughts, so I'm kind of trying to piece this together as I, as I speak, but overall, you know, it's my understanding that, that the reason that this is before us is, is because it goes to the discussion that was had at the public hearing on November sixth, where it sounded like the council wanted us, wanted the Planning Commission to take this, revisit this topic with this, with the area in the pink. But when I listened to the public hearing, which is on, on public record and on, on YouTube, for one, I didn't hear, there wasn't a huge turnout at the public hearing. There, the record or the minutes even show there was like not really more than six comments. There was one comment in proponent of the, there was one comment for, there was one comment opposing, and then there were other comments that were just unrelated to, to this item. So I guess, and, and then it was also, it was also discussed at that meeting that this was a topic because there was particularly one developer interested in the library site. And so what I'm getting at is, I guess I don't see how, how, in, in my opinion, if a developer is having an issue making their property or their site plan pencil out, I don't think that that's, that falls on the city to solve their problem. And they're, and, and expand the RTA to incorporate their site so that they can make their development pencil out. I think that developers have this issue every day and that's what they get paid to do and that's, and that's their, that's their daily. You know, that's their, that's their daily issue that they have to deal with is solving these problems. The other thing though is, you know, Mr. Combs and, and Ms. Wallace, I agree with both of your points that, that, yeah. Of course, I think we all want to see better and enhanced and vibrant, robust economic development because I think, I mean, from, from the time that we lived here and grew up here and seen what, what Lakewood is today, I know that that's what we all want. I guess for that reason though, I, I, I think that that's, that, that, that developers have the opportunity to do that in the existing orange zones and especially, you know, to the fact that there, there are and there have been vacant sites along Gravel, Gravel Lake Drive that have been vacant for decades, for decades. And now we're here being asked to contemplate the, you know, making it pencil out, helping a developer making their site pencil out because it, it's advantageous to them to that one site. Which, by the way, is another point I wanted to bring up is the site itself in question. You know, I don't feel, how the Tensler site was purchased by the, by Pierce County and, and the library system, how it was purchased long during its inception, I don't know, but I would venture to guess that as a public property, that it was, that it was purchased with either public bonds or in the public interest. And so that's where I even look to the city further to explore and to explore the concept of maintaining land that was purchased in the public interest to retain that, a portion of that or a percentage of that to continue to be in the public interest so that sites like the Tensler Library or the Lakewood Community Center, for example, should that ever become up for sale one day, that, that there is still an interest, a, a portion of those sites that are publicly accessible to the public because they have been for years and, and they were, if they were purchased in, in public dollars, they should remain in public interest. So that's even why I guess I kind of have further. This comfort, I guess, with, or I, yeah, I have, I have issue with, with expanding the site for the, for the purposes that have been, if, if the purpose is just because public comment came out at the November sixth hearing, that's not compelling enough for me. I think as we move into greater issues and further developments come along, we can continue to talk about this. And then finally, I want to say, yeah, I agree, I, I agree that Lakewood has, I, I don't think that Lakewood has an overabundance of low income housing. I think it has an overabundance of households that are struggling to keep up. And that was explicitly pointed out in the housing needs assessment. All those stats and figures paint a picture of, of a community that has a lot of households that are just in income levels that, that have, that don't have access to high-paying jobs or higher-paying jobs. And, and so I just, I want to be sensitive and careful that when we are talking about anti-displacement and the, and, and how we're targeting low income, I think that it goes to, it goes to how, it goes to the distribution that, that housing hasn't been very well distributed throughout the city. And so anyway, I'm, I don't want to go on too, I'm being too long-winded, but that's, that's what I wanted to convey, that I just, I think we need to be a little bit more sensitive and, and cognizant of how we are trying to target the distribution of these various incomes so that they're more variegated throughout the city. And also yet still, we, yeah, we have the task of, of, of trying to distribute even moderate to high-income housing accordingly throughout so that they're not all segregated in one, in one area of the city.
Any other comments?
Do you have an additional question on the, the requirement for the developer to relocate after the hundred and twenty day notice current tenants? Are there any parameters to that relocation? Is there a certain radius mile range that they have to stay within? Is it just a like accommodation?
I'll have, I, Commissioner, I'll, I'll check the statute to see if there's a radius on that. Whether or not it says that within the statute or not. We, the City of Lakewood does not have that within our code, but I can check the statute to see if there's a, a specific radius that's.
Yeah, because we're, we're sitting here talking about people who are, are financially stretched. You take and move them, you know, five, six miles away from their current dwelling. We're, we're putting a huge impact on their ability to live daily life, you know, if that's not laid out pretty clearly.
Miss Spear, I'm not ignoring you.
Thank you. Commissioner Chabel, just a quick response to you. The direction that came to staff and the reason we're talking about it tonight is whether it was specifically that 11, 623 hearing or some other reason council said we want, we want this in front of the commission. So you can certainly use that as a reasoning for whatever recommendation you send back to them. But we are responding to council's direction to bring it back to you. And so whether there were other discussions or other issues that the council wanted handled at the same time when you were talking about this, other than just that individual who was maybe asking for this expansion for a property redevelopment, I don't know. So again, as you're developing, once you have your public hearing and decide how you want to recommend back to council, again, as you're developing, once you have your public hearing and decide how you want to recommend back to council, you have plenty of discretion to say why you may vote the way you want to vote. And particularly if it's not a unanimous vote, if you end up with something where you have differing opinions and it may be a minority opinion, please feel free to communicate that to the council as well.
Mr. Larson.
In my view, the uh rights given to tenants is uh overreach that uh I think it would have a very uh subtle but powerful uh result, and that would be to have builders say, we don't want to build in Lakewood. Uh, so let's be careful with that and make sure that if we see the influence of the the tenant based rules uh bring a negative result, that we'd be very quick and lean to mean to fix them so that we don't start a bad trend. Secondly, I'd like to say that I agree with Mr. Coombs. So I don't need to repeat what he said with one exception, and that is that we have to look and see how many small builders we have in this county uh who are capable of building up to twenty foot, tw- twenty uh unit projects and they pay personal attention because this is their home. And that we make sure we keep that ability in the in the uh ordinance because uh the uh the big folks will come and they'll build bigger projects. Uh, and they've got the the skills generally to do it, but I don't want to rule out the small guy. And that it's less efficient, yes. But that less efficiency has a shiny side in that it creates more jobs. Because uh everybody has to have a everybody with a four or five man crew has to have one of them who's cleaning up. Well, you have that same one for twenty in a bigger company. So uh I just would like to be careful with that, but uh well said, Mr. Combs.
Anyone else? Uh, one co- excuse me, go ahead.
Well, I I think I'd, I I think it's worth clarifying what this program is. Because what what Ms. Newton's presenting is not um all of our in our power, and it's not all of what we do. M F T E is one tool that we have to help incentivize development. And it specifically focuses on multifamily. There's really, I mean, there, we we have jobs, we have all kinds of other stuff to talk about and and planning. But this this presentation is specific to M F T E, which is already going on and has been for some time and has had some success. I my, you know, my my concern is that we are not getting diversity in the type of product we have. And it and if we think about it is, this is not about high income, this is about getting to one hundred percent median, the average person doesn't have a house they can go into right now. And so that is it, you know, eighty to a hundred percent is part of that. And then the needs assessment, which you referred to, I would encourage everyone to go back to that and look at what the forecast needs were and which items were the highest. Eighty to a hundred and twenty is by far the har- highest need, not even close. And so you think about what what we're after, we're trying to help everybody. And and the one thing that's really neat about the M F T E is this condition where you actually accommodate this affordable component. They, in order to get this twelve year deal, you have to build it. Now, I would say, great, and I understand there may be some reservations. But no one's building on this right now. No one's doing it. No one's doing market rate housing. And so to say, let's, let's not, let's pull back, I would say, no, you, we, in order to get development and economic growth, you have to have something to stimulate it. And this isn't about developers getting rich. Right now, they're not building. And you can go and look at neighboring cities. If you're sitting on fifty million to build a project, are you going to go to the area that offers M F T E and you can fill a need, or are you going to go somewhere else? I don't, I I just talked to a developer today about this, and they're not going to any cities that don't have M F T E. And so I I, to me, I want to see that money come into our city. I want it spent here. I want the jobs from construction. I want the taxes coming here. Because that's how we help those people who are most marginalized. And so when I look at this map, I'm like, this is exactly where you want it. You run it right on the arterial major corridor, high accessibility. This is, this to me is smart planning. I I appreciate it. I I'm, I don't want to come across like this is the only solution. To me, this is just one tool on our belt, but if we don't use it or if we push it away, I think that we're doing the city a disservice. We're going backwards and that that is, that would be, that would be unfortunate in my mind. So that that's, that's my thought.
Ms. Chabel.
And I I would agree with all of that, except that I I think that that's exactly it. There they, there is the opportunity in the orange zone now. And so so why there is the opportunity now, these vacant lots have sat vacant forever. These pink lots, I'm calling them pink lots, but this pink area has been occupied forever. And so I guess I just think that that why, why should these vacant lots that have gone undeveloped for years continue to go underdeveloped at the expen- you know, like at the expense of of areas that are already occupied? So I agree, yeah, but at the same time, I don't think that extending the zone is it advances anything per se. I think that they have the opportunity. It's just that the I feel like the pink zone is in front of us because there's one particular parcel with an interest right now.
If if that's the case, I would say, let's exclude the parcel because I'm I'm not, I'm, I understand and I don't have any, I don't care about any one parcel. I care about the city. And so whatever will help the whole is what matters most to me. If if this is an issue of that parcel, I'd say yank it. I don't care. But but my 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 concern is that we we need more more housing. And you're asking the right question, which is, why is no one developing here now? And that is what we have to help Becky solve because she can't get people to come and spend money here, create more jobs, create more housing and do that without our help. So we gotta, we gotta give her more tools and we gotta be able to help answer that question. I I don't have the magic bullet, and if I knew it, I would have given it to her the last three years. I I don't know. But I want to give her more and so I I would approve as much as you put out there. In fact, I, like I said, I would double it up on the TIF. Whatever can get something going, because we don't have anything going. There is no active developments of any significance and everywhere else has it. And right question, why is it not happening? What 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 can we do to help draw people in? I think that there is some public safety concerns. Like, why would we put money here when we can go somewhere else and get a bigger return? You know, those are all questions a developer is going to ask, and I I understand those. And we have, I I don't know what which ones are which, but those are good questions. I think those are ones that we really do need to ask and try and figure out how we can help break those barriers down.
Mr. Herr.
So my question is, first, a point of clarity. M F T E is available already in other areas, correct? This is just an expanding, an expansion of that available zone. Is that a true statement, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So the concern that I have, I happen to live very close to this area, so I I've talked to a lot of people that live in that Wild Air Lake Avenue School Street area. And the concern that a lot of people have there is that if this happens and that development that we want to encourage happens in that area, that's a great thing, but it it's a double edged sword because it totally changes those neighborhoods that are right there. And that particular stretch of Gravely Lake um that we're talking about here a- and to um to my colleague's point here, you know, there are plenty of areas. So I I think the question that I have is not that I want to discourage development, we want that. You know, but if there's so much area that's, why are those areas not um attractive? And what is, what is the difference to this area? Why should we bring this expansion in if we're not utilizing the space that's already available? I think for me and and those other folks, that's the question that is there.
And Ms. Spear.
Uh, and just to remind everyone that all of this is being talked about as areas, this is not the entire downtown sub area that's been in adoption since two thousand eighteen, but it is generally the downtown. So the expansion of this M F T E program is not expanding what currently is allowed by code. It's just expanding an incentive on the tax exemption. This is already an area where all of what you're talking about could happen regardless of having the incentive option here. And the zoning says it, the development regulations say it. And as you get to the outer edges of the downtown sub area, think wedding cake or um kind of stair step where right where we sit would be the most intense, the highest heights, the the most commercial, industrial, if there even is any industrial mix. And as you get out to the outer edges of the downtown sub area, it's more residential, it's a lower height, it's intended to transition to the existing residential areas. But just make it clear, this area that's being talked about, already the development we've been talking about can happen. This is just, do we add a tool there to incentivize it since it's not happening right now?
Right, and I I understand that. So the the question still stands, though, if we have a large area that can already be developed, why are we going to incentivize this particular area?
Because this is also part of the downtown, which is the real focus for economic development in the city.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Larson.
If we uh were, it's the city, from what we tell them approves this quickly to get it to 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 address Mr. Coombs' perspective, then if we add just a loop that if there's something that rises up that's that's wrong, that there'd be an expedient way to remove it and keep the flow moving, uh, you know, then, yeah, let's get her done.
Ms. Spear, Ms. Newton, a few years back, I remember seeing pictures, posed pictures of Gravely Lake with two, three story buildings, but there was commercial on the bottom. And then there were living on top of the M, the this multi tax exemption does not consider that. We're just talking strictly about multifamily and not an inclusion of business. Is that correct?
If I understand the program correctly, if there is fifty percent or more residential, meaning up to fifty percent potentially non-residential, it still qualifies.
Okay, so it is possible to have business on the bottom to to you and then and then uh living on top. So what do we call those?
Mixed use.
Mixed use.
It's it's the i- ideal use, that's what you want in your core because it does help bring jobs and business, but you got to do them in areas that make sense. Like, you wouldn't do it in back of Commissioner Herr's house because you know, who's walking by there to service that business? You you did, no one can make that business work. So it, you want it on the corridor, so this is a good spot for that. Uh, this does, and I'm, I don't mean to beat this hor- horse debtor, but
Few more comments.
She says, she says um that this is the zoning, and that is the ultimate thing. This is already zoned for this. If I wanted to go and build this, I could knock it all down and and build all this housing. And no one would, no one could say anything. It's an outright, you know, approved use for it right now. This is just saying, how do we help attract people to look at this more seriously, look at our city more seriously? I will say, I would love to have this half a block from my house. I would, I I've worked on these types of projects. I've managed these after they've been built. And I don't know if anyone's familiar with these. I I know we've talked about this before, but how these work is you measure the income when people come in and that's how they qualify. And so you have to keep track of them, but they're not designated to a specific unit, which is such a cool thing. Now, all of a sudden, you have people who are making a little bit less than everybody else, and they're mixed in and integrated. That is, to me, how like, you know, we really meld as society. If we take it and don't do this, we create pockets of low income. If you're in planning, pockets of low income historically throughout our country and the world have have become blighted and problems. And you can imagine when that just happens, eventually the buildings get shut down. I mean, it's it's very derelict. It's not a good situation. So I I think this actually incentivizes something that really helps our community too. So it it takes care of a need, it fits something, I would welcome this. I would, I would trade in a heartbeat to have something this close. If you're familiar with Six Sav in Tacoma, up in University District, something like that, where you you have that kind of resource, where you go to a restaurant just down the street or visit friends or whatever, I like it. I know that's not for everybody, and I'm not, and I'm not suggesting it goes everywhere. I just suggest it goes where it's already allowed. Not in any new places, not into any private neighborhoods or anything like that. Wherever we already allow multifamily, let's encourage more multifamily because it's not happening.
Does anyone have any final comments? Spear, Ms. Newton.
Thank you. I would just add that um as the comment that was made about the incentive, if not for the multifamily tax exemption project or the program, we would not get the mixed use and the residential projects that are planned for the downtown, including the four hundred units across here in Lakewood Town Center, the other uh projects that are planned along Gravely Lake Drive. They, we've been told, and you know, anybody could say anything, but we've been told that if not for that project, they would would not move forward. And so that's um just for your consideration. And um as as Ms. Spear has mentioned, the uh density, increasing the densities with the downtown, we're going for an urban walkable community space um that, you know, people are proud of. Creating those densities, the the walkability, the services, um the good jobs that you mentioned, those are all part of the plan. And uh we just need some tools to help um push those first projects along and get people moving. And so I appreciate all of your input. And is there anything else that you would like to see for um the public hearing or anything um that you'd like me to prepare?
So the public hearing uh next meeting on seventeen?
The twenty first, I believe, yes.
So um is there anything that we should be prepared for? What's, you're going to make a presentation, would be yourself or Ms. Spear make the presentation first?
Unless you you want something changed in what I've presented, I'll do uh another brief pre- presentation on the M F T E and what we're proposing in terms of the expansion. And then um we would open it up to others to comment and uh be a part of that public hearing.
Okay, and just to remind everybody again that uh we just take input from uh from the the commenters, uh that we do not respond. We just uh will save that for later. Mr. Herr.
Mr. Herr, I did have one clarifying question on the the comments you just made.
Yes.
Uh, you said that uh planned projects, I think I heard you say that there were planned projects that were um dependent on this expansion happening. Is that, did I hear that correctly or did I mishear you?
No, um, well, there's the one planned project which was, which was um mentioned earlier.
That's the one for behind the mall, right, that you're talking about?
Uh, which will likely not happen without the M F T E. But there are other projects that are already within the M F T E boundary that are planned, including the Alliance Residential Project across the street and a couple others along Gravely Lake Drive and in the Colonial Center area.
Ms. Chabel.
I was just going to ask Ms. Newton, um, if there is so going at the beginning, you mentioned that the M F T E ordinance was originally passed in two thousand two. And so I think what would be useful for the public hearing and for us um that are new and getting up to speed is to know, I guess, how many properties have been benefiting or how 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 much of the of the multifamily units have benefited from the ordinance since its inception? And also, I would be curious to know what the condition of the buildings and the property look like today. And also, I would be curious to know what the condition of the buildings and the property look like today, having benefited from this ordinance.
Okay, so if I understand you, of the projects that have been completed or planned, completed specifically, how have they benefited and what condition they're in? Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
Anybody that has benefited from the ordinance since 2002.
Okay, thank you.
Would that, would they all be subject to the rental housing safety program?
Yes, every rental unit is subject to that program.
But still?
Yes.
Just to clarify, the program sunsets after a period of time. So I would, if we're going to look at who's benefiting, I would look at whoever is existing, who's still on the program, not the folks who built it 25 years ago. Because who knows what, you know, if you built the house under a program, who knows who has it years later? There's no way to measure that. But you certainly could measure anyone who's currently receiving that benefit, in my mind. That would be probably, and I don't want to, you know, speak for you. That would be like one I would be more curious about. I know they do fall under the rental inspection. Most of these, if they're of, that's why I like the bigger properties, because you know they have professional management on it. And so there's a higher, no offense to anyone, just a higher standard that can come when you have full-time staff dedicated to it. And those properties, on average, it's five to eight people for 200, full-time employees for 200 units. That's just at the site. You have secondary benefits from all the service providers around there. Not that we have buildings like that to use as an example today that are mixed use. But if you're mixed use, one other thing which I like to see is this retail component, because the retail is exempt from this tax exemption. So retail still pays taxes the whole time through. It's only the residential component, because what you're trying to do is get more housing. So you still get some benefit to the tax base if that happens. And so you get some taxes in the meantime. And then after eight or 12 years, a huge infusion that we need for our operating budget.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Spear, Ms. Newton? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So according to this, we have next steps is, again.
And just to clarify, so two weeks from tonight would be the public hearing. It'll happen at the start of the meeting, as you saw it tonight. Public comment is usually followed by public hearing if there is one. And then we'll move on to other topics, once again, related to the 24 comprehensive plan update. And then the following meeting, unless you're ready to do it on the 21st, actually, let me elaborate. The Planning Commission could, if you decide to take action on the 21st, after a hearing and talking about your public testimony you may receive, or what you could do is several things. You could continue the public hearing if you decide that maybe there's a need to keep it open longer. If people come to you saying, or come to the city saying, we didn't get enough notice, we didn't know this was happening, we want to talk about it. You are able to keep a hearing open more than one meeting. But you can also say, okay, thank you very much, we will now take this under advisement. And then the following meeting for yourselves, so in March, you could talk about it more, potentially take action. So you could do it in a short way, a medium way, or a long way. That's all up to you.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Larson, you have another comment?
I don't know where this question belongs. And so from, because of my excused absence, for which I apologize for not knowing everything that went on while I was gone. When was the discussion, or is there a discussion yet to be on the zones and where the lines are between the existing zones? Because I looked at a couple things and would like to suggest some changes if possible.
You're talking about the citywide zoning map?
Yes.
And where the boundaries are?
Yes.
That has not come to the Planning Commission yet for discussion. So when we do start talking in May, when you'll get the package in front of you for 24, you're welcome to bring those up.
Oh, okay.
And in fact, if you want to send it to me prior, you can.
Yeah, because the map was within the package that we got sent, I thought it would be part of the subject matter.
The map came in previous meetings, yes, the zoning map. But as of right now, it's not up for discussion until we get through into the 24 process.
Great, I just didn't want to miss out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
We have, do we have anything you need to?
Sorry.
Anything? Okay, then let's move on then. I appreciate it very much. Mr. Bokey? No comments from there, okay? Anything else on Ms. Spear?
No, Mr. Chair, that's it.
Well, any other additional comments from commissioners?
I had one. I really do would like to please agree with the other fellow commissioner about the library property. I think it's bought by the city. It has oaks on it, which I think we should try to preserve as much as we can. And also, I think we really do need it for education. And same thing with that old building that's being used for senior community activities, if you will. That was originally built as the Lakewood Lighthouse for youth, to give them a place to go to study, to be able to have internet access. And given the abysmal education that's going on in our city right now, I think that we should definitely keep those properties and use them for special programs as we have fun. And I would really highly encourage that, because I was surprised when I read the statistics and that we had a 75% rate of people who couldn't read and write when they graduated from our high schools. That was stunning.
I would just say that the city has the ability to regulate zoning, has the ability to regulate what uses are allowed on a particular piece of property. It does not have the right to tell a property owner, you can or cannot sell your property.
Agreed.
So whether it is a public use or a private owner, dealing with that question, that's up to them under state law, state constitution, et cetera. If you're talking policy in terms of whether the city would ever look to its own public property and decide, do we want to sell this off for some particular use? That's something where council might be able to take some action and set some guidance. But if it's the library district, or the school district, or Pierce County, it's up to them to decide what to do with their property.
Oh, absolutely. It's just that the reason I bring it up is because if we have this money coming in, it might be that that would be an opportunity to purchase it if it was for sale and use it for that purposes, because it's right across from the high school. So that's why I bring it up. It's just to think ahead, that if it becomes available, that's one to plan for. That's what planning commissions do. That would be an ideal property for that use. They can walk there, they can use it, the kids don't have cars, it's safe, internet, et cetera.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I just need to clarify. The Tensler Building was purchased by private funds. It was built by private funds back in the 1960s. It was Tensler who had his foundation. He then donated it to the Friends of the Lakewood Library. They held on to it for a number of years until the building got to a point of they couldn't handle the maintenance. It costs more to maintain that building, and they just didn't have the funds. So the Friends donated the building to the Pierce County Library System, along with the remaining funds, which was not sufficient, it was $317,000. Wasn't sufficient to maintain that building at that time. So it was donated. So there weren't, it was private funds initially, but then it became a public library. So public funds had been maintaining that building since the 1980s and such. So, yeah, your point, public funds. Anyway, just as a clarification. Okay, anything else?